Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 26, 2022, meeting of the Alamo County Planning Commission. I'm sorry, was there a... I'm going to borrow my cheat sheet from my colleague here. We have moved to a hybrid version so that there are opportunities for people to be able to comment remotely. So we will be using this going forward, which is a great innovation. So the opportunities for the public to access and participate in the hybrid meeting are posted on the Alamo County website, on the Planning Commission homepage, and on the Alamo County calendar. Participation will include the opportunity to comment on those matters, for which comments from the public will be received. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and if you would call the roll, please.
Yes. Mr. Bailey?
Present.
Mr. Missile?
Present. Here.
Ms. Firehawk?
Here.
Mr. Carazana?
Here.
Mr. Bivens?
Here.
Mr. Clayborne?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry. All right. So we're going to move on to the work session. We have a work session on setback and land uses this evening, and Bill Fritz is going to present this at the beginning. Thank you.
Darren, thank you for taking time tonight, today afternoon, I guess it's not quite tonight. First time back for me in what, two and a half years? I thought of, I just told them I thought about wearing a box so you could just see that much of me, so it would look familiar. But it was a lot of work, so I didn't do it. So what we're here tonight is, this is just, this is a work session for the setbacks and land uses. I have a presentation. I'll go through it. It's more if you have, it's more to help you with the things you already have in your, in your packet. So what are we doing? The Board of Supervisors has tasked the Community Development Department with updating and modernizing the zoning ordinance. As you all know, the zoning ordinance was originally adopted in 1980 and has been amended over the years. And when you do that, it starts getting a little disjointed, and some of the things there are a little dated. So we're trying to modernize it, trying to make it easier to, to use, more user-friendly. So this is a multi-step project. The Board has graciously funded the hiring consultant to do this work. We're starting with the setbacks, step backs, and land uses. We've hired the Berkeley Group. We have two representatives here, Kelly Davis, Chris Musso. I did pronounce that correct, didn't I? And... Oh, Rebecca Cobb, yes. I looked right at her and did the wrong name. Sorry, Rebecca. Yes. Rebecca and Chris. They have experience working with a lot of localities in Virginia. They work pretty much, I think exclusively in Virginia, and they've worked with a lot of our localities. That gives them the advantage and gives us the advantage of having hired them to be working with a company that has written ordinances for a number of other localities. So they have a lot of experience doing this. So one of the things they did, obviously, in addition to their own experiences, they surveyed other localities to develop, to see what the best practices were. So the purpose tonight is to discuss the setbacks, 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 and land uses. This is just a work session. All the language has not been ironed out yet, so we're trying to get a feel. Are we heading in the right direction? And then ultimately, we'll come back with a, a public hearing. So what are we doing? So first, though, we're talking about the setbacks. And I just pulled a section from the zoning ordinance, and this is what setbacks are. And what it does is it requires the upper floors to be stepped back. This creates a weird architectural problem, engineering problem, where your bearing walls are. It has also been the number of numerous and repeated special exceptions. I'm not aware of any special exceptions having been denied by the Board of Supervisors. So when you're routinely granting special exceptions, it's probably time to amend your ordinance. So we're recommending that the step-back regulation just be eliminated. So I do have slides for each of the setbacks for the districts. I can go through each one of those with you if you want. You have them in your packet. Just to briefly outline what they do. The... Excuse me. One of the things that we're doing is with infill. Just talk about infill first. The infill regulations are... I didn't copy them, sorry. The infill regulations are a little bit difficult. You have to go and figure out where the dwellings are within 500 feet in either direction. You're trying to find what the average is, and you're trying to match what the development already was. We think we have an easier way of doing that, and that would be to say you can use either the setback regulations in effect at the time you apply for a building permit, or the setback regulations that were shown on the subdivision plat that approved the subdivision, because that would be what the subdivision was built to largely. So that would be an easier way, we think. If it's a development that precedes the recordation of an approved subdivision plat, they could apply for a special exception, so they have relief there. So we think that would be a much easier way of doing it and would be matching how development had already occurred. For each of the districts, for each of the districts, the concept is to graduate setbacks based on lot size and density. That's how other jurisdictions have done this. We are not proposing any changes in the rural areas, Monticello Historic District, Village Residential District, or the DCD District. In the R1, R2, and R4 districts, there is an increase in the front, side, and rear setback. That's proposed. This information's in your packet. I have it here in case you wanted to see it, but there is a recommendation to, to increase those setbacks. In the R6 district, there's an increase in the front setback. And the R10 and the R15 districts, there is no change. In the commercial districts, there's an increase in the front and rear. And the industrial, there's an increase in the front, side, and rear. Both the commercial districts and the industrial districts have currently and would maintain increased setbacks when they're adjacent to non-commercial, non-industrial properties. In the planned districts, what we're recommending, and we haven't quite figured out how to do this yet, but in planned districts, we think it would be appropriate to, to have setbacks for those districts. And if someone wanted relief from those setbacks, they could request that at the time of the rezoning, of the establishment of the planned district. What we have now is a situation where every single time we have a planned district, we're essentially writing a new zoning ordinance for it, and it becomes very difficult to administer. You have to, oh, wait, is this the new section of that development or the old section of that development? And wait, this development across the street has an altogether different setback. So we're trying to make it more uniform. With land use definitions, as I said, the ordinance was originally adopted in 1980. We've done some work to try to bring it up to date, but there's still a lot of outdated land uses that are in there. Some of those are overlapping and confusing. Is it this, is it that kind of thing? And there are some uses that just aren't listed in our ordinance. So what we're proposing to do is move to a matrix concept where we would broaden the terms, modernize the terms, and consolidate. So actually be fewer total definitions. And there'd be a matrix where you, so you look at the list of uses, and then it would tell you what districts it is versus how you do now, where you have to look at each district to see whether or not a use is permitted. So you could say, my business is X. Where can I go? You would be able to look at the matrix versus my use is X. Do I need highway commercial? Do I need C1? Do I need... You have to go look at each one of those districts. We think that'd be a whole lot easier to do. There's going to have to be some work here to make sure we match up the districts, and we're not expanding uses unwittingly from one district to the other. We're also, we know we'll have to change the supplemental regulations to, to match. Those are all mechanical things. There's no policy change there. We just know that as we change one place, you have to catch up with it in other places in the ordinance. We also know that there are some uses that are just so unique in character to Alamo County or because of what the comprehensive plan says about that use, that we just can't really do anything with them. For example, country stores. They're very specific. They're not small stores. We had a lot of conversations about that. Are they small stores? Are they retailers? No, they're country stores. They're their own special thing. Same with some uses, retail stores, eating establishments, automobile service stations, not served by public water. It's a very specific thing because of the comprehensive plan. And then we also have Monticello. Nobody else does, so we can't compare that with anyone else. So the Monticello Historic District needs to just be treated as its own unique thing. That's sort of the summary of what we're doing. I can answer questions. Rebecca, not Kelly, can, and Chris can answer questions for you also. They've done the research on this and can tell you how this matches with the localities and why we're recommending what we're recommending, or I can try to answer questions for you at this point.
Questions for staff? Yeah, go ahead, Daniel.
You mentioned, so my question kind of relates to like, when you think about what we're trying to do in Alamo County is keep a sense of, Commissioner Bivens says a lot, human scale, you know, and balance our rural assets with development. And I would like to understand a little bit about these five benchmark counties, because I know there's reference one about having a 12-story building. And to me, setbacks and step backs have to do with trying to maintain human scale. And I'm struggling a little bit of understanding, like, and one recommendation was to, we have a substantially lower setback, but are the reference, is that for an R6? But do we have, you know, is that, I guess what I'm struggling with is like, what's the equivalency for why they have a bigger step back, setback in some of these other counties that maybe they don't have as much R6? And is R6 the maximum? And so I'm trying to just kind of figuring out the relationship of the setback to the size of the structure that we likely would have in Alamo County versus some of these reference counties.
So let me answer part of the question, and then I'm going to turn to Berkeley for part of the question. So why the jurisdictions that were looked at? Staff, we got together and we said, which jurisdictions have we used as benchmark jurisdictions previously? Which ones are sort of known in the state for having good ordinances or things that we have been trying to emulate? And we've done that with a wide variety of things, from our, what is our healthcare program going to be to what is our land use is going to be? So we, we've done benchmarks before. And so we gave those names to the Berkeley Group. As for what each jurisdiction has, they've done more work in that and so forth. And I don't know if you want to provide some comment there.
Hello. So to answer that part of the question, these localities have lots of districts that we had to weed through. And what we would do would be look at those intent statements and compare them to the intent statements of Alamo. Look at their lot sizes, their density for those districts, and compare it to Alamo. And so when those lined up and meshed, we would then look at setbacks. And then too, in terms of looking at all the benchmarks together, because in some of the districts, the intent statements, of course, might be slightly different, or density might be slightly different. But then when you look at the setbacks compared to the others that we were also looking at, we could see, yeah, these all kind of match together, and they stand apart from what Alamo has. So how do we need to adjust? That's how we approach that.
Thanks, I appreciate that. So I guess the thing I'm left with, they're trying to get a picture of, you know, recommendation of sizes is, and the question, is an R6 the same in land use planning as a larger metropolitan area as R6 in the sense of a step down of massing, you know? Is R6 for Charlottesville and Alamo County area? Charlottesville's even different than Alamo County. But Alamo County, what we're doing is is R6 really the higher density? And so should we be thinking about setbacks differently for that size of a structure versus bigger? And so that's why I'm left trying to read through this and do that mapping in this document, which I wasn't able to really do without doing more research on my own to figure out, what, what do we see as being the different densities and forms of that building? And what should that be to achieve the type of fill and human scale we're trying to do?
So that's part of it as well. You mentioned the 12-story building. That was pulled out of a different district than like R6 or any of those. It was a separate district. And actually, that relates to an overlay that that particular community have, and that's where they use those step backs. So that was why that was pulled out as an example is, hey, this is 12-story building. This is, you know, along a specific corridor to protect it, and that's why they're using this. I just wanted to put that in there to explain, yes, some localities do have this, but here's the scenario, which doesn't really match Alamo. But in all other terms, yes, we pick districts that would match what Alamo is trying to achieve and build.
Appreciate it. I think that's, and maybe I missed it, but even just knowing what, per that, what was the maximum-sized building they were able to build for that density in that area might help understand the justification for the setback that they recommended and how that may map to our max height versus density requirements.
I'm going to look to my colleague over here. He might have some of those pulled up, and we can talk about those heights if you want.
I'm just registering it. We don't have to detail, but just registering the things and going through that as a work session of trying to make sense of these numbers. And to me, a setback and a step back is to maintain a certain fill and a, you know, and human scale. And we have that, that's very important, I think, to us as a planning commission. And so when we have these reference, which I get why we pick them as reference counties, because they're large, they're usually larger, they have more staff, they're better funded, so they have better ordinances, and they lead the way. And that's great. We should do that. It's just trying to do that kind of standardization. I'm a data scientist. I'm not a land planner by. So I think on data, it's like, how do we, how do we create apples-to-apples comparison that the, the max height is allowed to be this for this designation in this county, which is why that setback was kind of felt, so that when you're walking down the street, you don't feel like you're, it's caving in on top of you. And so that's what I think we're trying to achieve here, is we think through this and weed through this, these recommendations of what's the right setback to achieve something. And granted, I think we're all for making it easier to understand and simplify it. But, you know, I don't know that I have enough information right now from what I read to be like, oh, yeah, that sounds like the right setback for that, based on what we're trying to achieve. So that's just where I'm at with it. No, no need to respond. I think this is great work, and I appreciate it. I'm just left with trying to do that matchup in that.
Well, if I may, our role tonight is to, this is sort of a first pass, if you will. And if there are things that strike you as like, you need more information to understand how to judge that element, that's, this is the time to say that. But it's also fine to say, you know, I don't, I don't think that that's the right approach for this particular element, because they need our guidance so they can move on to, to complete it. So I know I had a couple of concerns that I found in here. So it's not to just like, understand, and then they move forward. It's, you know, give them some guidance so that they can get it as close to what this planning commission would like to see as possible. So with that...
I see. Yep.
Yeah.
So I think I've taken enough airspace.
Other, I mean, I can go later. Other comments? Fred?
I have a couple of quick comments. Thanks for your work. This is really well done. Just a few thoughts. One is thoughts and questions, I guess. And I'll just piggyback on, I think, a little bit of what Daniel was saying relative to step backs. So I'm just curious. I know step backs in the past have also been used to sort of help with sun angles, so you don't shade the street. And I'm wondering if, you know, this is a little bit forward-thinking, I guess, when density starts to get greater or maybe in the town center. But have you looked at, maybe I should rephrase it. I would encourage you to look at impacts on shading of streets, if you haven't already done that. I also noticed that you had mitigating in there. I think it was one-foot step back or, or additional setback for every one foot of additional building height. And if you think like a developer, right? Building height is, translates into more capacity, more density. So I would just look at if you're, if you're thinking about, I'm just making these numbers up. But if you're looking at a four-story building, and you have zero step backs, and you decide to go up another 15 feet to add another floor, you then have to step back five stories, 15 feet. And so that's more of an impact to the potential capacity of that building that the developer might be willing or might be interested in looking at. So you may have already compared all of those things, but I just check on it. Other quick comment is relative to the benchmarks. I think they were pretty appropriate. I guess I would be interested to know if, first of all, and you don't have to answer this now, but were you directly involved with any of the ordinances for any of those localities? And if so, or if not, when you were doing your research, did you uncover anything they wish they had done differently? That, so rather than just taking it rote that this is where they are, and this is what we would decipher, were there any things that stood out as, gosh, I wish we really hadn't done that, and we can learn from that? That'd be interesting to know. Let's see. I think that's pretty much it.
Yeah, you can have another turn, too.
Thank you. I reserve for, no, I reserve another term.
Julian, did you have a comment?
I did.
Yeah. I see a lot of scribbles on his paper.
You know, that's part of the scribbles is that it's just how I get through stuff. So I want to just make one sort of broad statement about Monticello is unique to, to Alamo County. And people know my drill on this. Each one of these districts has, has a historic home, have historic properties in them. Several of them have even a greater inventory of historic property. So let's segregate out the fact that Jefferson built that one to the fact that, to ask this sort of a question that I hopefully will get to at some point. What is the, how are we allowing the county's development efforts to be curtailed because we give an extra, or what it feels like, a governmental, a governmental oversight to a piece of property? So people, this is no, not, there's no, I'm not hiding anything. I've been asking for a long time, why do we allow a non-governmental entity to control how we develop our land? So that's myself. So my piece about saying to, saying to us that Monticello is unique, I'm going to challenge you that every single one of these counties here has historic properties. Some of them that actually are older than the property on the hill. So I would expect for you to go sort of, to do your homework on that one. The other thing that I, that I, that I struggled with, our supervisors are not want to increase our development area. They've got us at 5%, at 5%, at 5%. And so by increasing these setbacks in the development area, the R1 through 6s, you basically reduce the amount of land that can be developed. I personally cannot support that. Now, my colleagues who live in the rural, I actually do live in the rural part of the county, but my colleagues who truly live in the rural part of the county.
Uber rural.
Yeah, Uber rural. There's very little, or a little of any impact on, on the areas in which that's around them. But in the developed area, which is where you're going to see sort of the four, the future, sort of, the future for R1s, R2s, R3s, all the way up to R6, I'm going to struggle mightily with reducing and changing that dramatically. Now, perhaps there's a way to make that sort of more unified, to get to the piece that you're talking about of not having that, not having that be a difficult piece and say, these here will be this, and these will be that. And then you sort of do it as a binary solution, if that's possible, and then use the commercial light industry differently. I can understand that. But, but sort of separating out, separating out the 1 through 6, I have a problem with. The other thing, before we get to, I have a question. We're going to take it from page 24 to 24. You have a line, I think this is just an editor, an editor thing. This use is proposed dwelling, dwelling, common townhouse. This use is proposed to consolidate attached, single-family dwellings and semi-detached and attached semi-family dwellings. I think either we need to drop the third attached, or we need to give me a different housing type. Because if, in reading that, it feels like we're talking about the same thing. I'll let you, you know, since this is a draft, I'll let you do that. Then, my other question comes to, what do you want us to do with the proposed uses and definition? That could be a work session, all into itself. I remember, oh, I always, she always looks at me sternly. Ms. Bloomfield, Blooffeld, because I always get her first name wrong. Because I want to say it's Leah, but it's Leia, and I, you know, that's just my own sort of blockheadedness. When she came to us a couple of years ago, we spent, it felt like weeks on definitions. I've got so much green ink in here that I could spend at least two days talking about the definitions, and why are we going to some of those definitions?
So on that, the question we would like to get from you today is, do you believe there is value in trying to consolidate and, and, and reduce the total number of definitions and going to a matrix concept versus the exact language that you have in any particular definition?
So I would be one that would say, yes, I think there's some value in sitting with that. But I also noticed that when we look at the performance standards, and I couldn't figure out how to, how to marry that with a land use matrix, but assume that that would be another problem.
It very quickly got, it, it, it got a lot of tentacles going, and it became even more difficult to understand. So we sort of tried to, we tried to consolidate, just like with the definitions.
Yeah, I get it.
Focusing down. If, Commissioner Bivens, if I could, well, before we get too far along on the, the, the setback issue, one of the things we can do is we can go back and look and see what the densities have been with the different setbacks that the counties had. One of the things that we're also concerned about is the concept that reduced setbacks are not changing the density. We're still getting the same density. You're simply getting larger structures and greater floor area ratios. And that this increased setbacks may not reduce the density, but they do provide, may provide for smaller houses because the density is still going to be maintained. You still have four units per acre, for example. But you can't have the same amount of building coverage in that four acres because you have to build it within a smaller setback. May mean you can't have a single story. You may have to have two, two floors. But one of the things that we're looking at there is it also having a difference in the floor area ratio on each individual lot. And just wanted to give you that and see if you had any comments.
So let me give you some pushback on that immediately then. So I don't know necessarily, and this is something that I would ask you to wrestle with the, with the supervisors, but certainly if you're going to wrestle with me on this, I don't necessarily notice that the code should be the thing that determines how a house is built. So I don't know that the code should be the place where we say you can have a 1,600 square foot or a 4,000 square foot. I think that's a, that's a market decision personally. I also noticed, there was an excellent article in the Wall Street Journal, I think it was yesterday, that people are making very specific decisions on how they want their houses to be, because many of them aren't going back to offices, and they're having to accommodate a different lifestyle in the thing that used to be only the place that they went at the end of the day, where everybody sort of gathered at the end of the day. And we also know that Alamo is one of those places that people are wanting to gather to. So before, I would sort of say, let's, 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 let's shrink the, or let's increase, I guess. Let's use the proper term. Let's increase the setbacks. I would actually say, let's let the market make that decision. And because I think we're also seeing something here, as we become a community that people may age out in, they might want to have a garden, but have a 1,600-square-foot house or have an 800-square-foot house. I remember the piece that we saw, I don't remember the developer's name now, but on Route 20, where she was trying to put small houses.
Nichols Grove.
Thank you. I gave her some foolishness because she was saying they're going to be inexpensive, and all of us who have stayed in any kind of upscale hotels know that you can make a 300-square-foot hotel room as expensive as a, you know, as, as some of our homes live in. So that was, you know, we always pre-assume some of those things. But what I, what I'm saying here is that I think Echo Village is another one where, is it Echo Village? Where Echo Village is another place where I think lifestyles are changing. And so I may not want a big house, but I do want a big piece of property that I can wander around on. So I would just caution us, and, and, which I think you're right, in making that decision that a setback helps to sort of send signals to the development community that this is the, this is the number of square feet here. And my sense is the development community and mortgage rates make that decision as opposed to our ordinances. And now I will be quiet.
But let me, I don't know if you want to respond to that. You don't necessarily need to. But since we only have this one-hour work session, so we don't sort of, to me, have enough time to go through all of the things and then summarize whether we all agree. Sorry, I got loud. I would suggest that if you disagree with something another commissioner says, or you want to put a finer point on it, that you speak up. And that way, we won't have to have a summary that, yes, we agree with what Julian said, or yes, we agree with what you said, if that's okay. All right. So you're done for now.
I'm done for now.
Luis?
Thank you. And I want to thank staff and Berkeley Group. So I found it pretty easy to go through this document, which is, which is great. And so I do appreciate the way you, you put it together. I have a lot of the same concerns, so I'm not going to reiterate that. I'm going to try to hit them some new ones, and then maybe highlight some of the ones that I think are, are... are pretty critical, at least in my view. You've mentioned, I'm in page two. And I'm not going to start there and go every single page, but page two.
Of which, of which document, just so I know.
I'm sorry, of your, of your phase one diagnostic.
Okay.
Report. And structure is mentioned, and I would agree, there is some challenges with our current structure. The, the way that it's mentioned is that it's not part of their initial phase, but that it, but that it is important. I'm assuming that it is being addressed. And I just, so that was just a question that you are addressing the structure along with it. And I, and I think that is, that alone, I think is a real positive, because there are some challenges and you go through there and try to find your way. Particularly if somebody is not, you know, just kind of doing it. So I think it's very user friendly. It is not user friendly and the recommendations would seem to be, I mean, I think the proof is in the pudding, but.
We may not be able to get to it. So to we, towards the end, but yes, we are with an eye towards doing that.
Yes, that's, that's great. I'm going to try not to be repetitive. Chair.
It's okay.
So, so we talk about a minimum and maximums and removing the maximum, which, which I agree with. I think it goes back to to the point that Commissioner Vivins was, was raising in terms of increasing our setbacks. So once you increase those setbacks for the lower of the R one through R six, well, I guess R six is a fifteen. But once you increase those setbacks and you don't have any, any maximum. You are limiting to some degree, right? And so I guess the question I have is what were you seeing as the benefit? For that increase? Was there a driver that got us to why we go from, from, from five to thirty five?
We have, there, there are a couple of things there, and I'm going to try to, try to do this quickly. There are a couple of things there. One thing we're looking at is we're looking at the location of the driveway overhangs. We have a great deal of trouble with that interfering with sidewalks. That's, that's been a problem with for us. We have the reduction, which is bringing everything closer to the street and losing some of that street scale that we were looking at. Also looking at what the Climate Action Plan talks about in terms of heat island effect. And the stormwater impacts of having that large floor area ratio. And by having these increased setbacks, you're going to have that benefit also of of more green area within your development area.
I think some of that would be important in here.
We, we'll add it, we'll, we'll consider it and expand on it.
Context of why, why.
Yeah, this was given without context and we, we should have given that.
And, and to the same point, I, the, the, I had a similar question about the counties that we were using as our benchmark. And again, I think what I'm missing there is, is is the context. I think Commissioner Bailey was, was alluding to that. And when we look at it, ours is, you know, we're different than a lot of these counties in many ways. But it's hard for us to understand why that is without understanding of the other parameters that are involved in those counties. And so that would be very important in how we look at this and understand it. The, the step back issue is another one that I, I, I agree with Commissioner Missile on it. So there, so there are some challenges with that. I, I don't quite follow the, the, the code or architectural structure issue. I mean, I, you know, post and beam construction, there is no bearing walls when you're going up. So that goes away. I think it's, it's, it is an architectural issue. If you have all your buildings looking like a ziggurat, right? So at some point you want to minimize that. However, it is, it is one strategy that we can use to minimize scale. And to provide that, that more human scale to, to some of these areas. That's been said, I'm not going to dwell on that, but I do think that's something that we need to take a look at that. And I do not understand the, the, the trade off in setback. The one for one, that could be a, I think the, the the result of that would not be a pleasant streetscape. If every building is off by two or three or four feet in height, they're going to be off two or three or four feet in, in their setbacks. So I think, think about that a little bit more, what the ramifications might be. My last point, which is a new one, is, is having to do with special districts, I, I was trying to reconcile and think about our form, form, form based code or form based planning approach, RIO twenty nine. So how does something like that work with these setbacks? Are we then creating, you know, like Croze, you, you, you point that out as a, as a separate. So are we going to wind up with a bunch of little separate districts throughout the?
We're still, we're still experimenting with the form based code, like a lot of jurisdictions. And so it's really going to have to be its own, own thing, very much like D C D is.
Yeah. So I, so I guess that's something that I would wonder is how that then, what are the implications of, of that to, to, to what we're doing here now?
Yeah, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to pull it in.
That's it.
All right.
I don't have much. Louis just stole my thunder. I jot it down, Rio twenty nine form based code and just how, how those things coordinate. And so I don't have to repeat that.
Just, just say, the D C D is kind of, it was a start at a form based code many years ago. So we learned some things there. So I think the form based code is going to have to kind of go the same route as the B C D. So sorry.
Sure. And just, and I'll just plus one on the, the step back piece. As I think about, you know, I jotted down some of the setbacks, C one was ten foot, H C was ten foot. And I think about walking down West Main Street in Charlottesville, where you have hotels and larger buildings fronting up against the street with similar setbacks. Taken away that step back is, to me, doesn't feel good, you know, initially. So give that some more thought with those tighter setbacks that you have. I feel like that might not be the, the best approach is to eliminate the step back altogether. So.
This is the feedback we needed.
Yep. Okay. Well, and I will, I'll tag on to that. That was one of my comments as well. I, you mentioned the fact that we had for I always get step backs, there would be a number of them that we had recently granted a waiver for. And I recall the last three, and it was particularly, well, in it, in one or more cases, it was because it was a hotel. And so they would kind of lose the whole side of the rooms on one side. But it was also because of the context of where they sat. None of, none of those were sitting right up against a pedestrian sidewalk where you would get that cavernous feeling. None of them were challenged by the problems of light and air and sun and, you know, so that's why. And so I feel like there, I know it's hard, but that's why I have these excellent consultants is to figure out in which cases we want to retain those step backs. Because I do agree that we're trying to look for a more urban form in our development area. And in reading this, just, you know, I'm not going to go page by page because there was a lot here. But it, it felt like we were kind of going back a little bit to more of a suburban model. At the same time, we're trying to do this urban ring. And you mentioned that, you know, we have the form based code at Rio and we've got Croze. And, and I felt ever since I joined this commission, I don't know, five years ago, wherever it was, that there's a lot lacking because in our code, because we're building a city around a city. That's what we're trying to do essentially, but we're a county. So there are some things we can't do as a county that cities can do. But, you know, I think that there's a lot more that needs to be done to, to recognize that we're trying to create more of an urban forum. And so some of, you know, I'm, I'm actually not for some of those expanded setbacks from the road. I would, you know, I grew up in a front porch community where reports were just close enough, but not too close. You know, you couldn't see what somebody was drinking out of their glass, but you could, you know, say hello, Mrs. So and so, and how are you? And you kids get out of that yard, you know. I, I just think, well, you know, that sort of community spirit and you can see and you can be part of your neighborhood. Whereas some of those neighborhoods where the house is way back there and you, you know, you don't talk to your neighbors when you're walking the dog. Because you can't even tell who it is walking the dog. You know, if somebody wants to live in that type of a neighborhood, wonderful, good for them. But I think that for what we're trying to build in the urban ring, I didn't find that the comparisons of the counties that we're looking at necessarily provide the best model. And I'll use an example from a recent webinar that was being hosted yesterday about rural roads and how great they were. And I was invited to join this webinar and I said, well, I could join that webinar, but I feel like Albemarle is already a leader in rural roads. And in fact, the convener of that talked to the people who are going to be teaching the course. And they said, yeah, we use Albemarle as our go to. And so in this case, in this case tonight, I think that we might want to be a bit more out of the box and do a few things that aren't being done by some of these more suburban counties. And actually look to some cities and towns for some of that informing. I also say that when you have a neighborhood that has all the same setbacks, it can be, look kind of boring. It's actually nice to not only vary the road curvature, but also to vary the, the distances that you have for those yards. So I guess I'm the, I'm not actually not an outlier. I'm an outlier of this memo a little bit, but not so much, I think, on this commission. I wanted to bring up another quick point that has kind of been touched on a bit in terms of, you know, floor area ratio and, and thinking about lot coverage. Instead of being as concerned with how far back a structure is from its sidewalk in a residential district or even a commercial one, for that matter, we could think about for residential maximum lot coverage. Because we, we do see that happening a lot, you know, in Fairfax County where people are just going. You know, there's like nothing left of the yard. They're, they are building these, you know, five thousand, six thousand square foot homes on in neighborhoods and they're just domineering over their, their neighbors. And more, maybe even more importantly than that, social dominance feeling is the fact that we are trying to deal with stormwater. And so, you know, if you have a residential lot and you're just improving the size of your house, we don't have a stormwater utility fee that didn't go forward. But we're trying to deal with all this stormwater runoff. And so we might want to be thinking about trying to preserve some green space. So maybe, you know, maximum lot coverage. To your earlier point about, you know, people want to build different houses for different reasons. Somebody wants a small house and a big garden. So anyone wants a larger house so they can put their kid, you know, after college in there and their home office and grandma and whatnot. So I don't, I don't want to ramble on too much, but I guess, yeah, I would like to, to not get rid of step backs. I would like it to be contextual to the, where the building is. The other thing is that I understand from staff that as we move through a rewrite of our zoning ordinance, we're going to be looking at requiring massing from the development community when we have certain applications. Whereas right now we just have block blobs. And so it makes it hard for us to make judgments on, on the arrangement of the structure. So just, just something to think about. But that is, that's mostly what I had. I did, I'm glad, I did have the same reaction you did to all the definitions. I, I do believe they should be condensed. I don't want to be the source of confusion for anyone. But yeah, I feel like that would be its own work session, you know. And I was glad to see though, that you did pull out campgrounds versus camps. Because there's been a lot of confusion around whether this is something that people are sleeping overnight in, or they're just going to have a picnic. Or, you know, how long they're staying there, all of that.
There are a lot of things like that.
Yeah. And there are, even in our county, there are something, I only learned of this from my younger brother, some hip camps, you know, about those. It's like Airbnb except for camping. And there's a number of them where people are renting out their, the side of their river on a public road. And people are paying to camp there and, you know, coming with their trailer and live there for three days, two weeks, a month. And I think those are kind of going under the radar too. I don't think our, I don't think in the whole Airbnb, you know, night, you know, lodging for hire type thing that we even got to those. Or I would venture to say perhaps kind doesn't even know where they all are. So.
We're like designing Mr. Talking.
I will go on a camp, camping exploration and find, no, just kidding. But I, I do think there, there are, there's a definitely a need for addressing some of those. Because they're sort of operating campsites with no zoning and, and no tax collection as well. So the other, other concerns with this, this document or whether we confuse the consultants sufficiently or whether they, you know, are other things you want to add.
Did I, you know, my reserve bounce back?
Yes.
Just a couple of things, just to, again, not restate what's already been stated. But one is under the heading of increasing the setbacks. I went to light industrial and heavy industrial, just thinking about the, the capacity that the county has and how careful we are to watch over that capacity because it's relatively limited. And the changes in the setbacks were pretty drastic to go from ten to thirty and zero to twenty and so on. So just thinking about maybe the introduction there of the light industrial and the rationale behind why those setbacks changed. Didn't really fully make a lot of sense to me. Because if you're concentrating your light industrial or heavy industrial and, you know, a certain area, you probably want to make it as dense as possible with reason, you know, with an understanding of proximities, I guess. The second thing was, you know, this, this is, I think, going to become part of the comprehensive plan, right? So this will.
Part of the zoning ordinance, that's where this is. This will ultimately be a zoning textment. So.
This will be regulation.
Right. So, so, well, go ahead, go ahead. Obviously, I'll tell you what the next steps are. Sorry.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about sort of the forward thinking piece of this, right? I mean, this is sort of now a snapshot in time in a sense, and we're looking at why. And I'm, I'm sure you're thinking ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road. But, you know, I'd be curious to know how these patterns of development that are being influenced with these setbacks are forward thinking. And how that ties in. And then one last just curious question. If you have an adjacent landowner that is the same, so you have two adjoining landowners or the same landowner. Has there been any thought given to any change to setbacks at adjoining common property lines?
Historically, no, and that question has come up. And the answer has always been no, because there's nothing to prevent those properties from then being sold to two separate individuals.
Right, that makes sense.
And so treat them, and if you want to combine them or do a boundary line adjustment, combine them or do a boundary line adjustment to, to alter where the buildings can go. So that's been a consistent answer.
That makes sense. Great. Thank you.
I want to hearken back to a conversation the planning commission had several years ago, talking about crossroads communities. And I'm thinking about the number of sort of former general stores that are still sitting out there, but they're not stores anymore. Maybe someone's living in them, you know, they've been, they're grandfathered out of their, they can't, they can't go back. And I'm actually think that there's perhaps on this planning commission, some interest in looking into opportunities for those to be re-upped. If somebody wanted to create a little, you know, jam shop or something where tourists drive by and one car stops and picks up a, you know, homemade bread and some jam and continues on.
We, we, we have that book that, that lists all the country stores that existed prior to. And it's a pretty large book and we have the class A and the class B. And while we're talking about going to a combined, a combined definition, we'll tweak the supplemental regulations to, to still have that, that country store. We were, we were talking about combining them. This, that was one we couldn't really do. Sorry. The other ones, the, so there, there's the, there's the class A and class B country stores. And then sort of a class C, whether or not there's gas involved. So actually for those older ones that used to be, and they've changed their use, they be coming back as a country store, class A is not that hard to do. It's by right. We wrote it in such a way, I know we're getting off topic, but it's such a way that to, to minimize the impact of VDOT regulations and parking regulations so that they can reopen without having to, you know, completely destroy the property or knock down or acquire additional property or knock down things. So yes, the country, that, that, that was work that was done to come up with the country store, class A and class B.
Similarly, for some, there are some rural churches that are sitting empty. And they don't have, who wouldn't meet modern standards for parking requirements. And so they, they cannot reopen. And I'm just curious about.
We also changed the, we also changed the religious assembly area based on the our loop of regulations and the, and the agricultural limits for farm wineries. People don't think they're related, but in fact they are. If you allow assembly of two hundred people at a winery, you have to allow assembly of two hundred people for religious. And if you're not regulating the winery rate, the winery assembly, you can't regulate the, 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 the religious assembly. So those small places out there, they can, they, they can reestablish, they can, they can even expand in a lot of cases. And all they need is a building permit. Same thing. Yeah, it's, it's, we've had a number of them done.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Their comments are direction.
Yeah, just really a general comment. I mean, this could apply to this, to the setback versus um step back or some other uh factors that we've talked about. And, and that is thinking about providing mitigation options. So instead of just switching one, so I think, I think one of the options for the setback was get rid of the, for the step back and then create more setback. So instead of switching one for one is provide mitigation options where they can do potentially several things uh to mitigate the issue. But first, we gotta address what the issue is, right? And that's why I think the context is important. What is it that we're trying to address with some of these changes? And then are there ways that you can build in flexibility? So if someone wanted to, instead of uh the step back, they wanted to create more setbacks, or perhaps they could provide landscape that mitigates the height. Uh, so there's some things in it, and I, I think um Chair Firehawk, um, my recollection is the same, that those, those exceptions were all because, one, some of them had significant setbacks, and we didn't think it was an issue.
Right.
Um, uh, with, with the height. So so I, I perhaps thinking about it, those terms, instead of just switching one regulation for another, they all have some significant unintended consequences, I think, where we can variety, provide some variety of options, uh, we'll have a richer uh built environment.
That's helpful. Um, if, if I could just turn to my team and make sure that we're getting everything that they need.
Are they gonna tell me what those three words were?
Bart, we all just wanted to make sure they didn't have any questions also. This has been very helpful. I, I'm.
So one, one, just before you, before you sort of move on, and you can just whisper what those three new replacement words were at the end of when you, we have a break. So like, know what the editorial piece on there is. But I, what we call, when we were doing the form-based code, and we were particularly looking at the opportunity that was going to occur, perhaps up twenty-nine, where the idle, lidle, idle, whatever the.
Lidle.
Thank you, where that is. But we had a lot of discussion about, about how to create place with both. I remember Rachel taking us through both setbacks and step backs. And, 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 and looking at how, I, I know one of our, 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 our previous um commissioners was trying to get a sense of what would the view from up there and not being able to sort of both have that, that interesting place, but also have a place that took, that, that that took advantage of our, of our topography. And so this is to go, I think, what Luis is saying is that as we're doing this, while many of the, m- m- many of the um communities that you reference here are, are sort of what I call flatland, fat, flatland places. There's a couple that have some sort of rolling hills on them. Very few of them, of these have the sort of backdrop of those western mountains or even the eastern mountains over there by the, uh, coming as you come down twenty, come up twenty, and they were there. And so thinking about what is, what is sort of the, the set? Sort of the visual set that we're trying to sort of create, create this, 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 this new place of being or to continue. And then that's, that would be, I think, helpful for me, and it probably would be helpful for developers as they can envision how they're gonna place that piece of construction in this particular location.
Yeah, we did spend a lot of time on that with Rio, talking about being able to see through so that you could, you wouldn't have just, when you were in that development, just be surrounded by buildings and not be able to see the mountains or the air and light. Um, you know.
You should, it's.
Yeah, the view.
I think that's the question, like, we have so much. You know, we go up to Rio and twenty-nine, it naturally sits higher, and so you can see a lot of things and being able to make a sense of if something's a little bit lower, and I don't have to give quite the big setback. But then trade off to have a step back that gives a view of the mountains now from a different elevation place, that'd be a good trade off to have to maintain our view sheds. If we eliminate step backs and mac, max, you know, increase the setbacks, we lose some of that flexibility. But, but those are, and then in general, I think that's, we've already said it, and not to be it. You've said it, and what I was trying to get to much more eloquently is that we are creating this urban ring, and so, but our, we're distinctively Albemarle.
Right.
Urban ring. We're not a twelve-story or whatever. And so what does that mean to us? And how should that be provided for in this so that we can facilitate the RIO-based form-based code and Croze and stuff like that, which is a, a different, a different fill, yeah.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And I would, I just add, you know, I know the art of writing code, you have to be very precise, as precise as you possibly can be. But uh, again, one of the uh exceptions that we granted was due to the fact that a building was actually slightly downslope so that the view from the street was not of a four-story building, it was more of a three-story building. So taking topography into context, there, I think there is an artful way you could put into code uh air, situations in which uh exceptions could be granted or, you know, that, just so that we get at that topography question. Because we are not a flat pancake.
Flatlanders, flatlanders, we're not flatlanders.
All right, so I think, I think it's not illegal for us to end two minutes early of our meeting unless anyone else would like to make a final closing comment. Gentlemen, have any thing to add to the discussion?
I, I will say that one of the reasons there's lots of ink is because I can read it. And so I will actually spend time with the document if I can sort of move through it. And, you know, and so any document that has, any document on my desk that has one or two marks, it's because I said, I'm not gonna pay, I'm not I'm not gonna invest in this because this is too painful. I don't need to do that anymore.
I'd just say, I, I think I launched into questions earlier. I just, I do want to say thank you to Seth. This is a hard problem and
Thank him.
and, and, and all that. So we, we recognize this is easy, and I hope my comments weren't taken as, as beating you up too bad.
No, we, we understand this is hard, and, and we sit on the side of the dice that gets confused often. I would, I would say that um it, when we get this back, when you've had time to wrestle with all of this, I would like to ask that we could have at least two weeks to go through it, because um, I, I personally have been out of town on business and, you know, reading this on the airplane, reading this in the airport lounge. Uh, you know, we, we need more time, especially if we want to ask you questions um ahead of time, ahead of the meeting, so that you can, you know, answer those context questions or reference questions.
You can do that.
Okay.
It's very helpful. I don't know how I'm gonna answer some of these questions, but they're, but they're helpful. Thank you.
Well, we didn't quite get to the meaning of life, but almost.
Pretty close.
Or what's a mini storage versus.
Thank you, Mr. Fritz, and thank you guys for all of your hard work. And reading code is, is not fun, but we appreciate your work.
It's geek work.
Some people, I guess, some people think it's fun to read code. All right, I'm going to call this meeting of the Albemarle County Planning Commission to a close. We will uh reconvene in one hour this evening in the same location.